Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, April 12th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. We'll now have the invocation from Pastor Paul Ruston from Redemption Hill Calvary Chapel, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from the Arizona Sunshine Free Clinic. Good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, City Council, City Staff and Residents, thank you for allowing me to be here today. Before I pray, I just wanted to share some scripture just real quick. Let every soul be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no governing authority except that which comes from God. You all have been appointed by God to do what you do, and the citizens and I appreciate that. And we hope that the decisions you make will be thoughtful and representative of the servant hood and pledges that you've taken to do that here in the city. So let's pray. Father, we just thank you for allowing us to be here in this beautiful place that you've created, Lake Havasu City, Arizona. We thank you for each and every council member, the city staff and the public that is represented here today, Father, that they care so much about their city, that they're willing to come and serve over and above the other things that they do in life. And I just ask that you watch over and protect them, protect their minds and their hearts as they make the decisions, the difficult decisions that govern this city, and take the city into the future, Lord. We just pray that you would, again, watch over them and their families, be with our police department, our fire department, the city employees, the, all the other city staff, Lord, that is represented here today. All these things we ask in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And welcome, Mr. Joe Fisher. If you want to share a little bit about the Arizona Sunshine Free Clinic with us.
Okay, I want to tell you first of all that I am Joe Fisher, Director of the local Lake Havasu City, Arizona Sunshine Project. A lot of you have never heard of that. It is new here to Lake Havasu. This will be the first year it's been done. This has been conceived some years ago by a group of healthcare professionals who decided they wanted to help those who are underprivileged, poor, needy, those who are kind of left behind sometimes in our society. And what they did is they've, since that time that they organized the group, they have held these clinics in Payson, Prescott, Mesa, Kingman, and now for the first time in Lake Havasu City. So I want to just share a few things with you. One of the reasons why they did this is the same reason that I have, and I want to share a text with you, a quote, "The poor shall never cease out of the land. Therefore I command you, saying, you shall open your hand unto your brother, to your poor, and to the needy in your land." So it's our goal with Arizona Sunshine to help those who sometimes have a hard time making ends meet. And I think each of you probably know somebody like that. A lot of us aren't in that category, but we see, as we drive around town, we do see there are some who are. 10.5% of our population here in Lake Havasu City are actually considered under the poverty level. So those people have a hard time since COVID has started, all those problems relating to losing jobs, the increase in costs of living, gasoline prices, we could go on and on. Sometimes families who have children sometimes have to decide whether they're going to put food on the table, or have a tooth pulled, or get a new pair of eyeglasses. So I think this is a project that'll be well received here in our town. I want to thank a couple of people who have helped us already. The first time I came to this city council area, I met Donna, not Donna, Mary Hadmark. She's a volunteer at the front desk. And she got excited about it immediately and volunteered to serve as a diabetic counselor. So we already had one volunteer. And I know another one, I don't know if she's here tonight, Michelle Lynn has volunteered. I know that we have several others. We actually have about 30 people out of 125 that we will need just to help run this program. That includes healthcare professionals, as well as just volunteers to help with hospitality, security, all the different things that we will need, kitchen crew, whatever. We need the volunteers from the community. We need the community to get involved in this. If it's a community project, everybody's going to get excited about it. And we are, we are a faith-based organization, but we rely on our community. We rely on other churches. We rely on service organizations and clubs to help us with the funding of this program. We have to raise $40,000, and we've already reached almost a 10, 9,500. So we're on our way, but we have a long ways to go. And we hope that some of you here will decide to help, either volunteer, donate, something that you can do to help out with this program. The hospital, we're meeting with the hospital board next, on the 22nd of this month, and we're hoping that they can help. They got a good, they got a good help last year in Kingman's event from the hospital in Kingman. Our dates are September 8 and 9, and it will be held at the Aquatic Center, Aquatic Community Center. And we're looking forward to, as many of you as can, to get involved one way or another, either donations, sponsor as a business, maybe just come and volunteer to help. And we do have forms and ways that you can find out how to do that. When you leave the building, I'll be standing back there. I've got two things that, for those of you who are interested, I would like to give to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you'd please call the roll.
Council members Nancy Campbell, here. David Lane.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Cameron Moses.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jim Dolan.
Hi Kelly, I'm here. Thanks for asking.
Mayor Kalshi.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And if I've on the agenda is the call to the public, this is an opportunity where citizens have to address the city council within, with items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Your comments would be limited to three minutes or less. There is a light indicator box up on the podium next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have three minutes. Yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that the three minutes has expired. Again, we ask that you address the city council. So you just look towards the seven of us up here on the dais to talk about whatever issue, again, within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. If you're here for an item that is on a public hearing, we encourage you to wait till that time because we can have a two-way conversation. Otherwise, during calls of the public, we just would listen intently and possibly give direction based on, on whatever that might be, because it's not on the agenda. So we can have a two-way conversation on that. You don't have to sign up to speak, but we did have several citizens do so. So we'll go ahead and start in that order, and then open up to anyone else. First person is Titus Worf.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for listening. Second time ever being here. I just felt called to do this. It needs to be brought up, and I would like to have it changed. So, long story short, I feel like a very young man due to brain damage at 16. I'm 34 years old, and just got a real job, and was working there for seven months, and guy kept getting naked in the locker room, and it was excessive. He wasn't just changing his clothes, he was doing things and chatting, and it made me uncomfortable. I've been through enough, and I understand that nudity is part of the world, and that is, it belongs on a nude beach, or in your home, not in the public dressing room, they call it. Okay, so there's the problem. It's a locker room where you have to store your stuff, and to go to the restroom, you have to go through the locker room. They have changing rooms for changing, but you are allowed to change in the locker room. I don't understand it. That's why I'm here. I'm trying to change that. I would go to the public beach, and I have to not only go in the public bathroom, but go in the stall to change, because otherwise it's nudity, and that's not okay. There's little kids in the locker room. It's traumatizing. I wasn't worried about it for five months. I let it go while the guy was over there doing his thing. When the guy was standing right next to me, in my space, and he was really rude about it, then it became a problem. I lost my job, is my point. It's changed my life. It's been almost a half a year later. This is wrong, and it's, every gym in America is okay with it. I don't understand it. It's terrible. And there's little kids in there, the big point. And this is not for me personally, it's to protect others. No one else should have to experience what I experienced. That was wrong. Not only that, but it's directly affected my life, and it's terrible. I'm sorry for everyone that asked to deal with that. Thank you all for your time. Bye.
Thank you. The next speaker is Christine Simmons.
Need to lower this a little bit. Hello, everyone. I'm here to brag about POD. We started it four years ago. Just homeowners that lived on the BLM and were tired of the Tannerite, tired of the trash and the dumping. My equestrian friends were afraid to ride their horses. People wouldn't walk their dogs. And so we want to take back that beautiful environment. You know, we are a desert community, more than just a lake community. So I brought some beautiful pictures of our POD collection, and we had a great group of volunteers that day. Here is my neighbor Candace. She was a first-time volunteer, and as you can see, their children helping, all ages were there helping. And we wear yellow. It's caution yellow, don't shoot us yellow, happy face yellow, mellow yellow. Okay. This is Tony Lisca. He owns the apothecary shop there on Mesquite. He did three trips in this huge army truck. And he says, we've got to do something different. He says, I want to start enjoying the desert, not cleaning up other people's messes. This is Larry. Now Larry has been there every time. He is a sweetheart. He was there before I arrived. Already took a ton of metal out of the desert. This is Tony again. He found a huge amount of landscaping trash out there. So it's not just people dumping mattresses. We found four mattresses, 21 tires, old vehicles, all kinds of things, but landscapers too. Shame on you. Huge thank you to our BLM ranger, Barry Solance. He provided the dumpster and trash bags. Awesome. This is the Four Wheelers Club. What helpers they are. They enjoy the desert, and they don't want to see it being dumped onto. It is city trash that's going out there. This old truck was a year and a half in the desert. No one could get it out. But hey, there is Tony again with his huge army truck, and he got it out. And then we had a wonderful, the BLM paid for the tow truck because he said, we can't leave it on the edge of, you know, the desert. They'll blow it up, and they would. Stop, dear neighbors, putting your old items on your curb with a free sign. Stop that. Shame on you. You're causing part of the problem. It's not a solution. You're not helping anyone. People are picking your items and taking it to the desert, using it as targets, burning it. So I'm my neighbor? This is my neighbor, okay? And so I put a note in her box, call bulky pickup, 928-855-9441. Make an appointment. Educate your neighbors if you see them doing this. Oh my goodness, already. Okay, all right. I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Christine, and thank you for all the work that you have done organizing those efforts in the desert. All right, that concludes the citizens that have signed up to speak a call to the public. But if anyone else would like to address the city council during call to the public, please feel free to make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Good evening. I'm Bonnie Toy. Just want to say thank you for you guys being the city council and the mayor, and for putting up with the junk that I don't want to put up with. And then I just wanted to say thank you for everybody who's back behind me, and tell everybody, once again, I'm going to say this every time. So, everybody, your life is amazing and a beautiful gift, and I hope that you learn to appreciate it before you miss parts of it. So, listening, I'm really grateful for the Arizona Sunshine person who just gave me that number of 10.5% of Havasu people are considered the poverty level. And I'd just like to, once again, remind you of the fact that I firmly believe that you should have summer raids special for the Aquatic Center to open it up for the fam, especially for families who cannot afford to send their kids there to enjoy it during the summer. That way, you'll be able to have children who can brag about their city, their city facilities, having fun in their city. And that would, I believe, help children also become just a little bit more mobile and healthier in small ways without them realizing it, because when you're laughing, swimming and having fun, that kind of works a bunch of cardiovascular exercise. You know, it's all about being healthy. Next, on your, I don't know exactly what the rules or the process is of your Facebook page and informing the public of what, I know you have the website. I also know that a lot of people don't go to the website. They look to other forms of social media to find the answers to the questions. And of course, thankfully, you have a government, Lake Havasu City Municipal Government Facebook page. I'm wondering if there's ways that you could use that Facebook page to be more informative for the people. For instance, today I had to wait for a gentleman in the crosswalk who was parked in the crosswalk on his motorcycle, but his back tire was still in the crosswalk. And instead of turning right like I wanted to, I knew that if I, he moved or anything, that I would be responsible for hitting him if I hit him. And so I had to wait for him to, you know, it's simple things like that. I really enjoy your YouTube video about crosswalk safety.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public? All right, seeing that, we'll go ahead and close the call to the public. Item six is our consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion?
Please.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Koch, and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Councilmember Lynn, your vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item seven is Correspondence, Communications, Petitions, Announcements, and the City Manager's Report. Item 7.1 is Announced Vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, one regular member and three alternate members. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, two regular members. And the Planning and Zoning Commission, one regular member. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at LHCaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is our City Manager's Report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Just today, City Council, yourselves and staff, met with the Student Council at Lake Havasu High School in preparation of their upcoming Student Government Day and mock City Council meeting. The agenda topics include the installation of a park and signal in the town. This exercise is a longtime tradition, sponsored by the London Bridge Women's Club, to educate high school students on how decisions are made by the city government level, with an emphasis on how to run a city council meeting. Student Government Day is held in this room. It'll be at 9:00 AM next Tuesday on April 19th, and it's always a lot of fun. Last Friday on April 8th, the Lake Havasu City Veterans Treatment Court held its 39th graduation ceremony. Several council, several council members and the members of the community were in attendance to help celebrate the accomplishments of 10 graduates that day. 219 veterans have successfully completed the program since its inception, and the current recidivism rate is 8.7%, while the national average is well, well above that. On March 29th, Mayor proclaimed the day as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day in Lake Havasu City. City Council and staff attended in celebration of our veterans. During the ceremony, our very own Human Resource Director Bobby Hamilton and our City Magistrate Mitch Klauley were honored by Congressman Gosar, along with many other leaders in our community, with a certificate of appreciation for being inducted into the Arizona Veterans Hall of Fame Society. Special thanks to all the organizations involved on the planning committee, and to the Elks Lodge for sponsoring and cooking the meal. It was a great event, well attended, and we look forward to this event again next year, again, celebrating our veterans, Vietnam veterans. On March 25th, Mayor, you and Vice Mayor Jim Dolan attended Nautilus for the Arizona Cardinals Visit Event. On April 2nd, Councilmembers Campbell, excuse me, Councilmembers Karen Moses and Jim Dolan, and their daughters Charlie Moses and Maya Dolan, joined the Rotary Club's Citywide Trash Cleanup Project to kick off the month of April in honor of Earth Day. Mayor, you proclaimed the month of April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and presented the proclamation to Mary Lou O'Connell, Kristen Langstaff, and our very own Chief, Dan Doyle. Then just last night, Mayor, you handed out certificates to students enrolled in the Patriotic Americans for Constitutional Education Program, otherwise known as PACE. And just this afternoon, Mayor, you met with hundreds of women from the Western Welcome Club of Arizona to proclaim a day in their name and in honor of their 50th anniversary. And finally, just a reminder to the, the public that city offices are closed this Friday, April 15th, in observance of Good Friday. Our Police and Fire Department, those services obviously remain unaffected, and will, and all services will resume normal schedules on Monday, April 18th. Mayor and Council, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. We'll move on to item eight, which is our public hearings. Starting with 8.1 is a Series 11 Hotel Motel Liquor License for the Quality Inn and Suites at 271 South Lake Havasu Avenue. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Jeffrey Miller has applied for a Series 11 Hotel Motel Liquor License for Quality Inn and Suites located at 271 South Lake Havasu Avenue. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 11 liquor license. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also in attendance tonight to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you. Are there any questions of members of the council for Ms. Williams or the applicant? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mr. Mayor, motion.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control approve a Series 11 Hotel Motel Liquor License for Quality Inn and Suites, 271 South Lake Havasu Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Lynn?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.2 is a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Quality Inn and Suites at 271 South Lake Havasu Avenue. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Jeffrey Miller has applied for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Quality Inn and Suites located at 271 South Lake Havasu Avenue. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 12 liquor license. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Again, are there any questions of any members of the council for Ms. Williams or the applicant? All right, this is a public hearing as well. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for possible motion or discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Koch?
I'll get to go first?
I think you just beat it.
Motion.
Yes, please.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control approve a Series Number 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Quality Inn and Suites, 271 South Lake Havasu Avenue.
I'd like to second, if it's okay.
Yes.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch, and a second from Vice Mayor Dolan. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Lynn?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.3 is Adopt Ordinance Number 22-1285, declaring the 2022 Amendments to the Lake Havasu City Code Title 14, Zoning Development Code, April 12th, 2022, a public record, and adopting multiple amendments to the Development Code by reference to revise setback requirements in the residential South Gate District and Island Body Beach District, remove dwelling multifamily from R2 district, prohibit the display of cannabis products or graphics visible from business exterior, revise the RM District standards to allow building height up to 30 feet adjacent to single-family zoning, clarify encroachment and non-habitable shade providing features into front property line, revise non-commercial message sign standards to allow 71 days prior to a primary election, and clarify Board of Adjustment consist of seven regular members, and revise the meeting time. Mr. Morris?
Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you. Just a little bit of background. Based on everyday use of the Development Code, it is typical to discover changes that could be made to improve the code and correct discrepancies and oversights. These types of amendments have occurred throughout the life of the 2016 Development Code. Give you a little background, approximately one dozen code changes, code sections were amended in 2017, eight of them in 2018, and five in 2019. This agenda item proposes changes affecting nine code sections. The Planning Commission heard this item at their May 16th meeting and recommended approval by a vote of five to one. So there's the nine different items here. I'll briefly discuss them at, at this presentation. The first one corrects the side setback from 10 feet to three feet in the residential South Gate District. That table that it references just contains a typo. That island district has always been a 20-foot setback, so that's just the typo in that table. And the second item corrects the front yard setback from 10 feet to 20 feet in the Island Body Beach District. Oh, I'm sorry, I read that the wrong way. I just described the second item. I'm sorry. I'll go back and re-describe the first one in better detail. The first one is, corrects the side setback from 10 feet to three feet in the residential South Gate District. That is actually a table that actually has another typo. The, the, the setback is three feet, the same as it should be in the RUMS and the RCHD, those other higher-density residential districts. It should be a three-foot side setback. Item number two is the Body Beach Correction. I'm sorry, I got those out of order. Item number three is to revise the setback, the multiple family setback table. It removes multiple family dwelling from the R2 zoning district. Of course, the R2 zoning district is a max, allows a maximum of two units, like an R1 allows one unit, R2 allows two units. It shouldn't allow multiple family. Multiple family is more than two units. So when that permitted uses table, it's just an oversight. There should not be, it should not have been an allowed use for multiple family in the R2 zoning district. The fourth item is, adds language disallowing the display of cannabis, cannabis products or cannabis graphics that are visible from the exterior of the, of a building, selling those types of uses. Based, this comes to the Planning Commission and City Council based on comments and concerns from the public. The fifth item corrects the permitted uses dimensional standards table to allow building heights up to 30 feet in the RM District, which is multiple family district, when adjacent to single-family zoning. Now, when the Development Code was revised in 2016, the R4 zoning district was renamed RM. And the R4 zoning from the previous Development Code allowed 30-foot building height, just like the current RM allows 30 feet, but it also didn't have a, didn't have a, it even allowed it next to single-family R1 zoning district. This amendment allows for consistency between those different code cycles. It endeavors to take it back to the way it was before, and the R, what was called the R4, but now called the RM, and still allow it. It still allows 30 feet, and it says it's also allowed next to single-family residential. The sixth item corrects the front yard setback to 20 feet in the Island Body Beach District. This is the same as the, the first item there. It just corrects that. It was, it's never been, it's always been 20 feet, so this corrects that also. And item number seven, it provides for- Item number seven, it provides for non-habitable shade providing structures, like a porch or a stoop or something, something that's not enclosed, not habitable, and allows those sorts of features to encroach five feet into the front property line as right in residential zoning districts. And that works fine for something that has a setback of, say, twenty feet or twenty-five feet, encroach five feet into that front setback. But there are some residential zoning districts that have a ten-foot front setback, and so that five-foot encroachment seems, it allows it to be five feet from the front property line, which seems really close. So the idea here is make it required to be at least ten feet from the front property line. Some of those districts that have a ten-foot setback already will not really gain anything, but the majority of the single-family residential and two-family sort of zoning districts that have a fifteen or twenty or twenty-five-foot front setback can enjoy that extra five feet for shade. And then number eight, again, this is updated to match Arizona State Code. It says that the State Code recently was changed to allow seventy-one days prior to a primary election for commercial or for election signs to be out. Our current code says sixty days, so this is just to bring it into alignment with the State Code. And finally, item number nine, it clarifies that the Board of Adjustment consists of seven members. It's not clear, it's not stated anywhere in the Board of Adjustment section of the code, but this makes sure it is. It's always been seven members as far as I, as long as I can remember. It also changes the meeting time from six PM to nine AM. That's the same meeting time that the Planning Commission meets, so those seem like good changes from staff and at staff level. So that concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions you may have. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Morris. Are there any questions of members of the council? Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Mayor, question.
Yeah, please.
Item number seven, which is in regards to the encroachment, shade providing features may still encroach five feet into the front property line, but clarifies that they need to be at least ten feet from the front property line. I find that quite confusing because most of the time, anything that's attached to an inhabitable building, even if it's a patio cover, is considered encroaching. If it wasn't attached, so explain to me the difference between the previous code and this code as I read it when I built.
Let me see if I can make that a little more clear. In the, this exception allows someone to encroach up to five feet into the front setback. So let's say you have an R one lot and your front setback for the house is twenty feet. So you can have an eve or an overhang of three feet, but this says, hey, if you have a shade providing structure, let's say you can add a little stoop or a porch or something to provide extra shade out in front, it says that whole structure can be five feet into the front twenty-foot setback. So if we do the math, it means fifteen feet from the front property line rather than twenty feet for the shade providing structure. The idea is to provide more options for people to have more shade and be sheltered from the elements and allow them more connection to the outdoors to the front of the property. So this doesn't change anything for those existing properties that already enjoy this. This says, hey, we want to make it clear that if you have a front setback of ten feet, like the RMH or some of the higher-density residential on Main Street in our, in that area, that have a ten-foot front setback, unfortunately, that you already have ten feet, and that seems like five feet would be ten, would be five feet from the front property line, which seems very close. So the idea is, okay, we'll clarify this, you still have to have at least a ten-foot setback. So if you had a fifteen-foot front setback, you can encroach that five feet to the ten foot from the front property.
At least ten feet, so, okay.
Yeah.
It's just, so we're off by only a few feet. I was just wondering why we changed that, but I can see that for some of these districts that we could have used it in the past, so thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Morris, I, well, we're on number seven. So is this a permanent structure that's coming off of the dwelling, or is it like a pergola or a gazebo?
It could be any of those.
Any of that, okay. Gotcha.
Yes, permanent, of course, gives your permit for it.
Okay. Yeah. Perfect, all right. Any other questions of members of the council for Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Yeah, Councilmember Moses?
Luke, can we go back one slide? Yes, number five. Can we expand on that a little bit for the thirty feet? You said you went from the RM to the R four. Was there, was there public input that made us do that when you originally made that change back in what, you said two thousand eighteen?
Two thousand sixteen was when the Development Code changed.
Was that, I mean, what I'm asking, was that intentional to go from eighteen to thirty?
Well, what that-
Or is that an oversight?
What it does is, right now, the RM District, which was called R four previously, the RM District allows building heights up to thirty feet, citywide. And when, and the, when it got transferred over to the new code and changed named RM, that thirty-foot building height still remained, it's still allowed to be thirty-foot in height, but it added a little caveat that says, hey, if you're adjacent or abutting, single-family residential zoning, you're limited to eighteen feet.
Okay.
And I think partly that came from some other zoning districts that were allowed forty-two feet, and they were, they had a caveat that said, hey, if you're next to a single-family residential, you need to drop down to eighteen feet. Those other districts always were at least thirty feet tall, except some of them were only fifteen feet tall in the R threes. So when they got converted over, instead of enjoying a forty-two-foot tall, tall height, they were limited to eighteen feet if they're adjacent to residential, single-family residential. Now, I, I kind of diverge a little bit from this RM zoning to give you a little background, I think, why that, why this was lumped in with those taller districts. They were forty-two feet, the R, and they had, they were allowed a taller height through this Development Code change in two thousand sixteen. The RM zoning has always been thirty feet, whether it's been adjacent to single-family residential or not. I kind of liken that to like RE zoning, the residential estate zoning, they're allowed thirty foot, feet, whether they're adjacent to single-family or not. So in this case, I think that was a little bit of overreach to limit them to eighteen feet in the RM, because they've always been allowed to be thirty feet.
Okay.
And just, and it, if, if you want more information, there's not very many properties, really, that are zoned RM. There are like three nodes around town, and it greatly affects them.
Can we define adjacent? I mean, is it literally sharing a property line, or is it across the street, or all of the above?
It'll be at least property line, across the street, we wouldn't consider adjacent.
Okay. All righty. And the thirty feet obviously would allow for a multi-story, more units for density reasons, correct?
Yes, you can get, certainly get two stories and thirty feet, it'd be a stretch to get three, and you bring up a good point. The RM zoning district is our, one of our highest-density zoning districts, it allows ten to twenty units per acre, a maximum of twenty units per acre. And we know we're looking for more residential options for the citizens. So if we're going to limit a number of RM zoning districts to only eighteen feet in height, one story, that takes a lot of flexibility out of people designing and providing additional residential units. So it's a trade-off, but I think it's something that is important, that there aren't a lot of these RM lots, and they are fairly large, so there's potential for a lot of residences on these properties.
All right, thank you, Luke. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
One, do you have the actual area map of the residential South Gate District and the Island Body Beach District? I know I looked it up for this particular purpose and realized why this made so much sense versus I've had comments of people thinking that we're doing this citywide and we're not, where this is only during certain areas of Lake Havasu City, is this correct?
I do have PowerPoints of the RM sections of town, if you like to look at those. I don't have anything that shows specifically the, the South Gate area, which is basically the south, south end of town.
On the other side of the highway, yeah.
And there are no RM zoning districts or lots in that area.
So people that have further questions, I do recommend they're going on and checking your zoning map. This isn't in your backyard, is what I'm trying to say. In most cases, it's not in your backyard. Let me verify that.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. We do have two citizens that have signed up to speak during this section. Again, you don't have to sign up to speak, but we'll start in the order of the folks that did. So we'll start with Race Myers, Mr. Myers?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilpeople. My concern is in regards to, I can go back to number five, changing a setback. If we're next building a two-story building next to a single-family home that has a pool or their, their bathroom windows or living room windows are looking out to the side of other property, looking at a two-story building, they're going to have people looking out their windows into their backyard and into their pool. So the amount of privacy, you know, thirty feet, two, two stories, given in those situations, is going to really be reduced. We have a lot of families who have built homes with views and, and built homes not realizing that they are next to or having the area zoned RM. So it's a matter of, are we respecting those people, have them have their privacy in their, in their yards and their homes? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Myers. Mr. Morris, do you have the RM lots? It's a few RM lots that are impacted by this, so this isn't-
Would you-
Maybe we can, could you illustrate that? Do you have a PowerPoint?
I certainly can. I'd certainly be happy to, thank you. So in anticipation of questions like this, here's one of the areas that is currently zoned RM, and you'll see that it's this brown color, and this red line demarks the, the boundary between the RM and the abutting or adjacent R one properties. So you'll see this is on Lake Havasu Avenue North and Bahama and Bimini Lane area. Now, there are some existing developments in this, in this area. So along Lake Havasu Avenue, there are a couple developments that are exceed, that exceed eighteen feet in height. They were developed long ago, they, but they are, they exceed the eighteen feet in height. They are, they meet all the Development Code sections of, of the time. One of the things this change would do would make sure these remained in compliance, they would know if, if this does change doesn't get made, these would continue as non-conforming existing developments. And this is what was allowed previously, and the thought is, this is something that staff thinks should be allowed. Again, these are fairly large lots, and there's not very many of them. So here's one area again, that we talked about, Bahama and Bimini, along Lake Havasu Avenue. Another area is the high school is here at this large lot, so Palaverie Boulevard, there's some RM in here. So again, this red line marks the boundary between RM and R one where they abut. Here, there is an existing multiple-family project exceeding eighteen feet in height. It was built a while back, and again, these lots are, are not very many RM lots, and if they're limited to one story, then that would substantially, could substantially reduce the number of residential units that are allowed. Here's another area along Lake Havasu Avenue South, in the area of Smoke Tree, South of Smoke Tree Dual, and down here by Chip Drive, it's zoned RM. There are a number of developments here that are exceed the eighteen feet in height. So here at Lake Havasu Avenue, and then Lake Havasu Avenue and Park, well, not Park Avenue there, but that street, and then the entire Los Lagos developments, those are all exceeding eighteen feet in height, and it would cause them all to be non-conforming existing structures, so, and developments. So these are, these are the areas in town that are zoned RM, there's not very many of them, and again, taking away that ability to go with two-story staff feels that would hamper the ability to provide more residential units in town. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for illustrating that. So the, the majority of these remaining RM lots, they were R four prior, they had the thirty feet, now they're RM, looking to, to bring the code back into compliance to what it was before, but they're all off of commercial districts, the way that our zoning generally works, you start in commercial areas, high-density residential, and you move into lower-density uses as you move through, through the code. So thank you for clarifying that, I think that was a helpful illustration. The next citizen that signed up to speak was Bambi Osgood. I miss-
I guess I'm going to talk really fast. Oh, Luke is, I got a lot.
Oh, no, you, you have some time, so just to keep an eye on that light indicator box, please.
I'm not cut to three minutes?
You're actually to five minutes for the public hearing, so.
I still might not get through.
All right.
Anyways, our founding fathers of this town, there's a reason why they did the limit on the lots that they had with residential, multifamily, duplex, et cetera. I disagree with that. I don't think it should be over eighteen feet when it backs up to residential that are single-family. There's a reason people have purchased those lots, there's a reason they've built on them. Ordinance changes in this town, I think, are too lax. The builders and developers, they are not required to publicly submit proposed building plans, so when something comes up, they can say, oh, we're going to do this, but they can change their minds on it, and once it's already been approved, we have no say on that further. A good example is, I'm nervous. A good example are builders and developers, they're allowed to also split lots, and then as they choose, for example, if they purchased a, a duplex lot that was originally set for a duplex, now they've purchased that lot, they're splitting it, they can put four units on that one lot that used to be for two units, because it's still considered a R two lot. I don't think that, I don't agree with that either. He talks about the flexibility, it's potential for more residents, it's also potential for a lot of overcrowding in residential neighborhoods. A lesser sex setback, that also means more crowding. Does that include a carport that can be extended out further so that the house can be, or the multi-unit can be larger? And then also too, I think too, when, when zones and changes are allowed, that plans, sorry, I scribbled notes, it's hard to read. After they're submitted, they shouldn't be allowed to go in and make major changes, it should only be limited to a small percentage, because again, when things are voted upon that, you know, we want to change this from a commercial lot to a residential multifamily unit, they could develop half of it and then come back in later and do more changes to it. So I think that more regulations need to be done on that, because again, a good example is when a lot is split or it is changed, again, the builders and developers, they come in and they change it, and once it's been changed, we as citizens, residents, we have no say in it. So, yeah, and again, for the RM lots, when they back up and they are adjacent to residential homes, I do not agree that they should be allowed to come in over fifteen feet, because they will be allowed to look down into people's backyards and in their pools, and we lose our privacy. So, and it overcrowds the neighborhood because it wasn't designed for that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. So if we could just dissect a few of those comments, Mr. Morris. So is the carport, is that allowable use in, and I guess that would be item?
Five feet closer.
Yeah, the five feet closer.
That would only apply to residential, like human, not occupants, but human-use things. We've had people try to take advantage of that and say, no, it's not allowed for carports, it's not an extension of your carport, I think it's, it's for the use for human, humans for shade, not for cars or vehicles.
Okay, so carports would not, not be allowed in this update. And then the R two lot, if someone were to purchase an oversized R two lot, they could sell it and split it and it now becomes four units?
There's a process to split a lot, any new lot created via splitting a lot or something would have to meet the current standards for that zoning district. So if they had a lot that's large enough to split and create two individual lots, as long as it met all the Development Code, the minimum width, depth, and overall square footage, it's allowed. It's been known for people to have, maybe have three lots and then make, make, have, sometimes they have three lots and make two out of them if they don't have enough room to do it with two. So it, it can be done, there's nothing against it, it's allowed per the Development Code and the subdivision code, as long as it's meeting all the requirements. It doesn't require a rezon or public notification, it just goes through the review process through staff, and as long as it's meeting all those dimensional standards, we don't really have a reason to deny it, it's something that's allowed by right.
Yeah, excellent. And then the RM, where the, the fifteen-foot, and the illustration that you've given us in the, the prior three slides, they're all in areas that were R four, that have been this way for many, many years. So it's, it's not like it's going right into the central of a residential, they always were at thirty feet. So it's just, when the code was updated in sixteen, it, it carried over that conversion that you were doing for, for the other issue. But these are all off of commercial areas that when you purchased your lot or your home, you would have known that it was zoned for, for thirty feet, unless, of course, that was done the last couple of years in this interim. All right, would anyone else like to address the city council during this item? Yeah, please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
My name's still Bonnie Toy. I think that's what it is. Oh, wait, I know it's Tuesday. Today I am Bonnie Toy. I have a couple of concerns about all the whole list of amendments that you want to change. One, well, after watching all of that, as somebody who lives behind the Xanadu- One, well, after watching all of that, as somebody who lives behind the Xanadu, I'd just like to say, let's see, I can still see all the people on the third floor completely clearly. I could take pictures of them all day long. So I, yeah, I don't have to worry about any house building up next to mine that's going to be over 30 feet. I don't think you would allow that on my street, I would hope not. It's already done because of the whole Xanadu. But just for other people who might not want that in their neighborhood, there's an understandable reason. Some of those neighbors are really loud, too, and I can't do anything about them. The cannabis thing, I don't understand what the objection is for them to have items on display in their window. Hello, you can go to Walmart and buy a shirt that, with a pot leaf on it. What's, what's the difference? I, I don't understand that. The, um, election thing, what state law is versus what the city thing is, I, um, do we have to be like the state in everything? Can we just be different than the state for some things? Just out of curiosity. And then, um, what is the Island Body Beach District? Because when I hear Island Body Beach, I'm assuming you're talking about the Body Beach area where the hotel's going in and that you want to take 20 feet away from the city. I'm, I know I'm probably reading it wrong, but when I first read it, the way I understood it, as someone who doesn't understand that stuff, I thought you were trying to take more land from Body Beach and give it to the hotel. So, the, those are my questions.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so the Body Beach District, the hotel that's being built down there is on fee simple property. They bought that property, and nothing was given to them. So they bought that property, it's been zoned for, for that for many, many years. So that it's not connected, but it, that whole zone is in that area.
Okay, so is the Island Beach, or you have on there, Island Body Beach District that you're referring to in this development code amendment, is that specific for that area? Or is there more, um, Island Body Beach District area than that specific area?
Sure, yeah, Mr. Morris.
Yes, thank you, thank you for the question. The Island Body Beach District does include that area, includes other areas that are on the island and near the Body Beach. I don't have a zoning map for you, but it's not only that area, there's some other areas around. It is, as the name implies, intended for that area of the island and the Body Beach, not for the rest of town. So you'll, that's where you'll find it, and that's why it was named that way, because it's, that's what it's in proximity to. So it, it's not only the Body Beach area itself, but it's other area, other properties, private properties.
And then the code change that's being suggested for that area is only for that area? So it's specific to that zoning district?
Okay, but again, the zoning district doesn't just include Body Beach area. By Park Avenue, it's more than that, correct?
Correct, it expands out to the island, as well as that shoreline along Rotary Park through the, the area commonly referred to as Body Beach.
Okay, and then your South Gate thing, you're saying that it has to do with South Gate? I drove past to Walmart today, and on the way back from Walmart, I saw a sign next to the Refuge, I don't know if it's still called the Refuge Golf Course, or Resort, or whatever that place is, Refuge, out there behind?
In Desert Hills, that's outside of Lake Havasu City.
Oh, okay, it says South Gate on it, so I was just wondering.
Yeah, that's a development in Desert Hills.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with the South Gate thing that you were discussing on adding that?
Correct, yeah. The South Gate District is, is our zoning code is descriptive, is the south portion of Lake Havasu City on lakeside of Highway 95.
Okay, and then again, the whole cannabis pot thing, whatever, let them advertise in their windows, my goodness, you can go to Walmart and buy stuff and...
Yeah, thank you for your thoughts. Would anyone else like to, let me get back to you in just a second, Bambi. Would anyone else like to address the, yeah, Christine, if you'd like to make your way to the podium?
Well, I enjoy city council meetings and I learn a lot, but now I think I'm going to attend city zoning meetings, because a lot's going on there and it's affecting us homeowners and residents. And, you know, if you own a home and you're a little R1, and next door there's a vacant lot that's, what is it, 4M or whatever, and they can go up 30 feet, 18 feet? The problem with developers, I came from California, they never allow enough parking. They may have 20 units, but they don't have 40 parking spaces. So where do those other people go that have two cars? They park it on your residential street. So it encompasses noise, and thanks to our police department, they can handle that after 10 o'clock, but, uh, you know, if your children like to play out front, are there going to be sidewalks? I mean, we need sidewalks. It's dangerous now with the traffic we have. I love driving down the streets and seeing our beautiful lake. I'm tired of the buildings popping up, blocking the lake view. So I think we really need to rethink this a little bit, and I know when they rezone you in your neighborhood, they have to put out a zoning change sign, right? So pop, please look at your neighborhood. If you see a zoning sign being posted, that means it's going to affect you. It's going to affect your parking, it's going to affect your noise, and, um, yeah, I'm not for that 30 feet, 18 feet's one thing, but after COVID, I think we all know how privacy's important, your home's important, and our city's important. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Sarah?
Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm Don Rhodes.
Yeah, Don, if you could just make your energy stuff on the microphone so that the home can...
I'm Don Rhodes. I spoke to you on email last night.
Yes, you did.
And if you remember, I sent you a table
Yes.
from the 2016 Building and Planning Code. I really don't have a dog in this race, but I could have a dog in this race, because I have two vacant lots behind me, that history has shown, people come in and they try to rezone those R1 lots into something more than they're not. In that table, it referred to, I'm speaking specifically of number five on the, on the, the 30-foot height limit. In that table, in the verbiage at the bottom, where it said adjacent to residential homes, meaning beside or behind, that per, what was the words that was used? Per the neighborhood protection standards, which seems to not be mentioned here, and instead we're using the words inadvertently missed when changed from R4 to RM. I don't know if those words were missed by someone else, but to me, neighborhood protection means that they kept that height limit to protect the, the R1 homes from being overbuilt and keep the height limits to the same standards that those R1 homes are. I built my home here in 2015. I went through all, when I bought my lot, I had to go through all the zoning standards, the setbacks. I have a 25-foot setback, I have it from front and rear, I have five yard, five on each side, and I have a 15-foot height limit on my RV garage. In order for me to build my RV garage to get a 14-foot door, I had to lower the garage. So why would we allow somebody next to me or behind me to come in and build a 30-foot building? And like I said, I just want you to all think about that, because you do rezon. You do change, you know, you do file petitions. And what we have to do is we have to get variances. So if there's a minimal, minimal amount of these lots, it would seem to me it would be more realistic to protect your neighbors and make those people that are want to build higher, into higher limits, get variances. The planning and zoning handles variances all the time. So to me, instead of jeopardizing the privacy of those neighborhoods, I mean, I don't want a two-story looking in my backyard into my pool area. Would you? Each one of you have homes here. Would, would you appreciate an empty lot, building two stories above your backyard? I don't think so. So it's just something for you to think about. And remember a couple of words, if it's predictable, it's preventable.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Morris, do you have any thoughts on what Mr. Rhodes was mentioning about the neighborhood protection?
Yes, the, the neighborhood protection section, as I recall, it deals with structures that are taller than 30 feet, and they require them to be set back a certain, an extra distance from property lines. I think the threshold there was 30 feet or higher. So in this case, it doesn't apply, it applies to, it may apply to those structures that could be 42 feet in height, if they're next to something. But in, in our code here, if there's those 42-foot tall buildings, they're limited to 18 feet if they're adjacent to the single-family residential, because those properties that are now adjacent to single-family residential, they were zoned R3 before, and then they were incorporated into those higher density, higher potential building height zoning districts that allowed up to 42 feet. It's a little complicated to explain, but they, they, they're allowed, they're limited to 18 feet, because previously, they were lots that were zoned R3 and they were limited to 15 feet. So they allowed to be bumped up three more feet, and allowed some of the other benefits that those other higher-density districts allow, but help balance that by requiring them to be no taller than 18 feet if they're adjacent to single-family residential. The majority of the, those zoning districts that allow 42 feet are not adjacent to single-family residential, so they can enjoy the full benefit of the 18 feet, of the, the 42 feet. So the neighbor, and as, as she was, he was asking about, the neighborhood protection section, I believe starts at 30 feet, and goes up from there.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Mr. Rhodes?
Right here, it says 15.
Well, I'll look at it here, let's see if we can find it here.
I'm sorry, that's accessory structure, I apologize.
Accessory, okay, so, so 18 feet. This is Luke's every day, so, but it's always good to verify. We want to make sure that, that we have an open and clear conversation about what, what's happening, so. Very good. Would anyone else like to address the council? Yeah, Bambi, if you'd like to make a final remark?
Thank you.
Yes. I just, if you could wait till you get to the mic, so folks at home can...
Have I got a low voice?
Yeah, folks at home want to be part of our conversation, too.
Hey, I raised three boys, I can get really loud. I've been here since 1969, and now I forgot what I was going to say. Give me a second here, I'm sorry. Oh, with this zoning change being requested to bring it from 18 to 30, something else that has not been mentioned to take into consideration, we are getting limited on lots in Lake Havasu. I know that there are developers that are looking at commercial lots now to change over to residential. Again, backing up to residential. They want to put multiple on it. Changes that it was originally a multi-unit lot, now it's a light commercial. I don't know many commercials, businesses that are going to put in 30-foot structures. So again, it's in consideration on this, it's not just going forward with the multi-unit properties that are available, it's also in consideration for when somebody goes in and does a zoning change on a commercial lot, because there are houses up Shema Wavy that are backed up to commercial. I'm sure there's other areas around town that are that. So that again is something to take into great consideration, because I think that people would be more open to a residential than a commercial. However, we don't want 30-foot looking in our backyard. 20, 18's bad enough, but 30 is excessive. And I, another thing that I remember too, with our founding fathers when we first moved here, they, they told, and Jay Scavuzzo would go out on the lake and drink water right out of the lake, this is how clean our lake used to be. And he said, because my parents are some of the founding families in this town, and he said, "We will never, never have a building over two stories in this town, and look at where we're going. We are getting Havasu, we're so concerned about further growth and development, but we are going to develop ourselves right out of a town. It's getting so crowded, I don't even like going on the highway anymore. Red light runners, this is not the same Havasu. I don't see it going in a good direction, and the more residents that we bring in, the more issues and problems. Unfortunately, that's what's going to happen." So I think if we keep things more to a minimum, so be it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so would anyone else like to address the city council during the call of the public? We really get one shot, that's, that's why I usually don't let folks go up a second time, because that opens that door. So I'm sorry, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to council for some additional discussions. Before I open up to questions from members of the council, I just want to talk a little bit about how zoning happens. So we have a general plan that identifies these. So some of these, these what-ifs that were proposed, don't really get to happen if they aren't supported by the general plan. Any zoning change has to go in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is a public hearing that occurs with a recommendation of some sort that then comes to the council for one or two hearings that are again, public hearings. So all of, all of these what-ifs, absolutely understand your concern and appreciate what they are, but everything's done in the open process and those conversations happen. So for, for an RM district to happen next to, to get a rezon into an R1 district in your, the vacant lot next door to you, is, is probably not going to happen. The second thing is some of these zones that we're seeing with, with height, that you're seeing have been zoned this way forever and ever and ever. It's just now that we're having infill, and these are the last lots to develop, they have that ability. As we're talking about this conversation, the RM zone, for example, when it was R4 and before it converted over, it was 40 feet. So this, this proposed code change is to revert to what it was originally. So these people that own these lots maybe since the 1960s or 70s, had this zoning right, zoning by right to build at 40 feet, and it was taken away by this inadvertent code issue that we're looking to address or talk about this evening, coming to us from, with a five-to-one recommendation for all nine of these code changes from our Planning and Zoning Commission. With that being said, any questions or comments from members of the council? We have one from Vice Mayor Dolan.
I had a question for Luke. So what was the height allowed in R3? That's 15 feet?
R3 allows 15 feet maximum height.
What allows the 42 feet that we were talking about?
42 would be the residential South Gate, the residential Main Street, and the residential Health, Commercial Health District, which are the, the highest density and the, the zoning districts that are tended to, intended to encourage multiple stories, high-density residential, along thoroughfares or adjacent to major streets. So along McCollack, Mesquite, and Swanson in the downtown area, those residential areas on either side of Swanson and Mesquite, those areas are intended to be, for the most part, higher-density residential, could be allowed up to 42 feet in height. In the south side of town, along Sweetwater and Marah, I forget the name, the...
Maricopa?
Maricopa, yeah. There are some, that's the South Gate area, and there's some lots in there that are allowed to go in to go 42 feet through that residential South Gate District. The RM is not in the South Gate area at all, there are no RM zones, lots there. Any RM zone lots that were there were turned over or converted over to the residential South Gate District. So there are no RM zoning lots down in that area.
Okay, and then we said it changed in 2018, and remind me, what was the, we just missed it, that number when it was sent through from the 2018 change, or why did it, why did it, do you know why it went from 30 to 18?
No, in 2016, when the development code was updated, you know, I, I think they overreached on that, but I think they're in, they were trying to protect the, the lots in the, the higher density that could go up to 42 feet. In my mind, they're trying to protect those, because some of the areas that got rezoned into those higher density and higher 42-foot areas were right next to residential, single-family, and they were R3 lots, which were limited to 15 feet. So they, it makes sense from planning standpoint to limit those, still have them enjoy some of the other things like setback allowances that that higher-density district allows, but because they were allowed only 15 feet before, they weren't 30 feet, they were only allowed to be 15 feet. They said, well, we'll give you three feet higher, so go 18 feet, but if you're, if you're adjacent to those residential, single-family districts. And it's not really the same case here, the RM, it's not, it didn't get increased at all, it's still 30 feet. The zoning, when the zoning code got updated and... it's 30 feet, I think they just put the 18 there without really thinking, getting much thought to it, as much thought as I think they should have in that. My thought is it was an oversight there, they just added it in.
Okay, because I mean, I definitely, I get the idea of not wanting a two-story building butting up against the R1s, but also, I mean, I like that we went through and looked at these individual areas, but I mean, I even know like along Bimini and Bahama right there, I mean, I know that area, it's a big wash through there. A lot of these, these are the areas, and they already have two-story buildings and they were already zoned for it. And like I said, we are going to need two-story buildings, we need apartments, we need, you know, it's not developing Havasu out beyond its limits, but, you know, we have employees that can't work because a third of our town is vacation rentals, or second homes, or third homes, or fourth homes. So, you know, I think, I just want to be careful with limiting our development for true affordable housing, which could be apartments and rentals, to that 10% and above that need to be working and need to, you know, that can't afford the $2,000, $2,500 a month for a 1,500-square-foot house nowadays. So I'm kind of on the fence about this. Seeing the lots, I'm okay with it. I don't know, maybe for discussion, is, I don't know if we need a little more information on it. You know, is it possible we could pull this off and visit it at another meeting? But then the question is, what other information would we get that's different than what we have now, I guess? But being that it's also lumped in with some of these changes that we're kind of seeing as just minor updated changes, so, you know, I guess my question is, do you guys live behind one of these RM lots? You do? Okay. Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah. Councilmember Campbell, did you have a question?
I do. I will admit, when I do my homework, and as I read through this, it reads, "Adopt ordinance declaring..." Okay, I'll just, I'll move on to the part that says, "A public record in adopting multiple amendments to the development code by reference to be revised setback requirements in the residential South Gate district and Island Body Beach district. Remove dwellings," I understand the cannabis. That was in that, if you look at those zones, like I wish that was in front of us, I also am confused with Councilmember Dolan on some of this. And I've requested before, when we're doing amendments to things like this, especially this many levels, I like to see strike-throughs, so that I can know what happened in 2016 and 2018, so that I know, was there strike-throughs? Where, where, where did you see it? Oh, okay. Okay, I did see those. Okay, I see. It's, yeah, it's not as easily, I did read all these, too, but as I go back, I looked at it more into those South Gate and that Body Beach district area, understanding that it's pretty much below grade in those areas, and your hotels down there, and then you have McCulloch that goes up that way and onto the island. And now I'm also kind of confused on, we're kind of going, it sounds like we're going throughout the whole community now, not with these last two, reads there, "requirements in residential South Gate district and Island Body Beach district," remove, you know, remove all these things that we're talking about. So I hate to have things come back, and I'm not a person that likes to table anything. I do see your track changes, I did read through those, I did assume we were talking about only those two districts, and I didn't think that we were talking about as many things as we had throughout the whole community.
Sure.
And I didn't know it affected so many people's backyards that we're discussing. I thought it was more of that industrial district that we, those two.
Yeah, so what we're, what's in front of us tonight is a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission with a five-to-one with nine separate amendments. And so the nine amendments, as Mr. Morris outlined, a few of them are in the South Gate district, some in the Body Beach district, others in the R2 district. So I mean, it goes through and outlines, which we have in front of us and Mr. Morris provided to us. But the RM district really impacts, by his, by Mr. Morris's presentation, three neighborhoods, if you will. So the neighborhood over in the Bimini, Lake Havasu Avenue area, Lake Havasu Avenue, Jamaica area, I guess, there's that getting into Jamaica, and then there was this one up by the high school. So these are the three primary areas of residential, or RM district that were, and that's only one, that's number five of the nine amendments that were here. The description that you just read tries to outline, so it's very clear to the public, all nine items that we'll be talking about. And so that's why, maybe it's confusing when we have the description with nine elements in there, with semicolons, knowing that they're nine separate discussions that then outline. So, yeah, I mean, what I, we've gone through the planning and zoning, we've had a public hearing, I don't think there's going to be any additional information that's going to be provided to us as Vice Mayor Dolan alluded. I think that we finished the conversation with any additional questions, comments, then we entertain a motion to move forward and we see where it goes.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I just had a question. I know the lady sitting in the audience made a comment, I didn't hear it. So just in the interest of making sure that we hear everything the public had to say, I think somebody asked her if she lived near one of these, if she could speak at the microphone and let us know what it was that she actually said, because we asked her a question and she answered.
Yeah, Bambi, yes, it was.
Whoever it was that said they lived near the...
Myself and several other people there in attendance, but again, this is not only going to affect the areas that you're speaking of, but it's affecting future areas, too. Because if you change that zoning and allow 30-foot, then when they go in again, change a commercial lot to a residential, most commercials are not going to be 30-foot tall.
Yeah, but Bambi, this isn't, you'd have to do a rezone for that. So this is only the RM district.
This would be the second or third time that this property's been rezoned. So, there you go.
Yeah, it was 40 feet before, though, so, and we're going back to 40 feet. Yeah, 30, excuse me, excuse me, yes, 30. Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Dolan?
I have another question for Luke. So if we were to keep this RM at 18 feet, and somebody wanted to, or owned that land and wanted to go to 30 feet, can they come to, what zoning change or something could they do? Could they do a R3 with a PD, or an RM with a PD that's requesting a height variance? And then it goes out to the community and if nobody, because I know some of these areas, there's really not a big issue where it butts up to R1, but some, you know, I know some of them, there's big washes, and there's some, and other ones, there's not. So is that something we could then handle on a kind of individual basis with zoning?
Well, thank you for the question. Through the planned development process, you can ask for exceptions to the underlying zoning district. So for example, if you wanted to reduce a setback, or increase a building height, or have maybe a use that is typically not allowed, maybe you'll do that through a planned development rezone process, which is same as any other rezone, requires the public notification, neighborhood meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing, they would make a recommendation that would then go on to you as the city council, so for your review and your decision. So there is a process for asking for exceptions to the underlying zoning district. One thing that someone in the audience had mentioned was a variance. Height limits aren't subject to variance requests, so it's not something that someone could do for a variance before the Board of Adjustment, ask for a taller building height. The only mechanism to do that would be through the PD process typically.
I don't know, I do have some hesitations on this one. I mean, a part of me does, don't want to approve it the way it is. I'd much rather see it come back to council if somebody wanted it to 30 feet. Like I said, I, we as a city, whether we did it or not, we made a mistake, 18, you know, in 2016, and we changed it to 18 feet. It is 18 feet, you know, it is a big deal going to 30 feet. It's not just a minor adjustment by the people that are in the audience saying they're affected by it. And I would be frustrated, too. I mean, I do have one of those pools where people look down, I think a lot of us do, just because that's the way Havasu is with the houses. And I think even with some of these streets, it's, you know, on Lake Havasu Avenue, you know, with the incline we have, I mean, in a lot of cases, I don't think it would be a big deal, but I do see there could be a handful of houses that would be affected by it, and it is 18. I'd almost, I'd be interested in pulling it and not include it in this, and if somebody wants to put in an apartment complex, they come to the council, they get a PD, and they get a zoning height limitation changed, and so that's just, that's just my thoughts.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Campbell?
One more comment on that. The RMs, you'll have to put in, what I understand by a few developers, they're telling me that that's quite a big expense, because they have to put in the sidewalks and the curbs. Is this correct for what we're doing here, too? You're doing these setbacks, but then the setbacks based on, after they put in the curbs and they widen the streets, because I have a developer telling me it's like $54,000 on his RM just to do the sidewalks, the curbs, and widening the street, which, yeah, in RMs, it's great to have sidewalks, I understand all that, I'm not against it. But these setbacks, all of a sudden, the change in the setbacks, or the encroachments of even shortening the driveways, I'm confused about, now that I understand that it's in every one of these, not just in a certain area or district. Is it true? I guess my question is, do the RMs have to put inside, if you're going to be a developer, you're putting in the sidewalks and widening the roads, yes or no? Or can you explain that further?
All right, thank you for the question. The RM is a multiple-family zoning district, and typically, yes, it does require off-site improvements to be installed if they're not already installed. It typically doesn't require additional right-of-way being taken from the property or anything. Typically, the cross-section of what the roadway, all the improvements is designed to fit within the roadway, right-of-way width already for that style of street. So the setbacks would be based on the property line, and the city's not going to take additional property to install sidewalks, because it's already been designed to fit within that sidewalk, that right-of-way width, includes the street, sidewalk, curb gutter, that sort of thing. So yes, it is required to, typically to have off-site improvements for the RM, including curb gutter, sidewalk, street pavement widening, that sort of thing. It's required in R3, RM, the multiple-family and commercial, typically not necessarily on R1 or R2 zoning districts, but on the multiple-family, that's typically something that's required.
So they're improving the city streets, is what you're saying, not into their property lines?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, unless there's any additional discussion. Oh, Councilmember Lynn?
Yeah, I have a few questions. As the concerns that I'm hearing a few of our council members having on the RM, I want to say it correctly, the height limit being going to 30 feet. I understand, I heard Luke say that there was an oversight done in 2016. I have a question. I mean, did we have anybody challenge that at the time when it was reduced? Because right now, we're having people that are concerned about it, and they're showing up today, but I'm just wondering whether people that saw this change, that own those properties, that had concerns back in 2016, because they've had quite a few years to come and challenge it. So I'm just curious if we've heard that. And then I have another question when you're done with that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Morris.
Well, that's a good question. I wasn't intimately involved with this when it was done in 2016. There are a number of changes that were made, and this is one of them. And you'll see, we are coming forward with some tweaks and changes throughout the years. So there are obviously some things that were adopted that maybe could be tweaked and changed a little bit, maybe improved. I'm not sure how this got done. My presumption is, it got lumped in with those other 42-foot height zoning districts, and they just added it to 18 feet, like those others that were. This wasn't really as applicable, because this RM has always been allowed to be 30 feet in height, and so those other zoning districts weren't allowed 42 feet in height always. So they put some sort of mechanism in there to help protect those zoning districts that were R3, that were limited to 15 feet in height previously. So they couldn't go 42, even though they're part of those higher-density other zoning districts. They're not part of this RM. This RM has always been 30 feet. It's, one of the planning concerns is, this would create non-conforming existing developments, and it limits the, you know, it doesn't allow other people to do what was allowed previously in the zoning districts. So that's one of the things why staff is supporting, and the planning commission recommended approval, just changing it back to 30. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Lynn, did you have another comment or question?
Yeah, I appreciate that. I just, I guess, to me, to say the words oversight and assumptions and what happens and stuff, I'm not comfortable, especially when we have people that are attending tonight that have some concerns with it. So I'm not really comfortable with that change, regardless of what it was supposed to be areas, I'm not comfortable with this. But I have a question, we're not, nobody's really talked about this, on the marijuana business. Now, I don't have a marijuana business, I'm not, I don't necessarily support them, but they are legal, and I'm concerned with taking the overreach of saying that we cannot put, they cannot put graphics, picnicking, their products, like that could be in their signage on their logo, and taking that away, it's like telling me I can't put chopsticks in my Chinese restaurant thing. I wish we can explain that a little bit more, what that means, because I feel like we're controlling what they're able to use the advertising for their business. Could somebody share with that, what that means?
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn, I'll also take that, and then if you have any additional clarifying questions, we can address them that way. During the rezone for where marijuana businesses could locate within our community, based on state law changes at the council level, so this body here had several discussions about signage and location and how that was going to look, and so we had concerns with that, what the sign was going to be, what could be on the signs, where the signs could be. And so we asked that to be adjusted in future development code changes to clarify what the will of the council was at that time, which was done in 2020, like December of 2020, if my memory serves me, when we had that discussion. So I don't know if that answers the question specifically for you, but that's kind of the premise of where this came from.
Yes, I understand, and I remember being part of that conversation, and I guess I'm just looking at it as, as more of how this will affect a person's logo. Of course, we talked about this, we don't want to see a big pot leaf on the side of a building, but it just kind of concerns me on just like even the words of graphics and stuff, little things that they may have to do to sell a certain product. I don't know the business, so I don't want to get in the weeds there. I just think that we're kind of controlling how they're going to be able to sell their product, but that's just my thoughts on it. Like I said, I don't know enough about the business to know how they, you know, advertise their items, but I do have just some concerns on that. Thank you.
You know, if approved this evening, it would not allow them to use this graphic as part of that, so that would be, that would alter their business plan if that was part of what it is they were looking to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
The hardest problem I think I'm having with this is there's so many different things and so many different elements thrown into kind of one code. And I, I think, I know I was confused by it, I read through it, I tried to study it, and I still think a lot of other people might be confused by it, some may not. Again, where's the cannabis drops in there? I personally would like to see this cleaned up, where we're voting on things specifically, instead of dropping it into one whole basket of nine different elements that by reading through it is very, very complicated.
Yeah. Councilmember Coke, did you have questions or comments?
I just wanted to clarify, I was reading this table, right, Luke? I think I am, but when you read the table and the proposed change of the 18 to 30 feet for the adjacent to single-family homes, right directly underneath that, it says adjacent to single and two-family uses existing prior to the effective date of the code, and that is still 30. So would, that would still stand as 30, regardless if we changed the other to 30 tonight, because it was prior to that code being changed.
Yes, what that's intended to say, hey, if you have a property that's been developed in the RE, and it's 30 feet tall now, it was adjacent to single-family and two-family uses prior to 2016, then it's allowed to be 30 feet still.
Right, I just wanted to clarify, I was reading that correctly. And then it also is for the general, too. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could? Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
All right, I just, I just want to clarify something. I think doing this is fine. My, my comment is, on the RM zoning, if we, if we approve this whole change, because there's several different changes, the nine different changes, if we change everything except for item five and take that out, the people that are in RM, it now says 18 feet, if they want to go to 30 feet, they can still come to us and say, "We'd like to go up to 30 feet," and we could look at each lot specifically. Because some lots, it wouldn't matter if they go up to 30 feet, some lots, it may matter, correct?
You could certainly pull any or all portions of these.
Because some of them may have a, like a wash, they're adjacent to an R1, but they may have a wash there, so 30 feet isn't going to really hurt anything, but, and most of these lots are already developed on, anyway, there's only going to be a few of them. But what I'm saying is, if we, if we go ahead and approve this, with the exception of item number five, we leave it where it is, at 18 feet, if that particular lot would be acceptable 30 feet, they have the option of coming back to us and asking that we read, that we change that, that one particular lot to 30 feet, correct? correct?
That could be an option through the plan development process.
Okay, thank you. I think that's what Mr. Dolan said as well. I just wanted to clarify that.
What does that process look like, Mr. Morris? The plan development process, if someone were to want to go through that process?
Sure. The plan development process would go through a rezoning like any other rezone. So the applicant would hold a public, a neighborhood meeting. They'd invite all the properties within 300 feet to a meeting that they would host, explain in a letter to them what they're asking for, and give them the time and date of a neighborhood meeting. At that neighborhood meeting, they would then do a sign-in sheet and do minutes or notes from that meeting, and that would be part of their application to the Planning Department for the plan development. And then that plan development application would be scheduled for Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing. The Planning and Zoning Commission would then hear it and make a recommendation that would go on to the city council at another public hearing. And then the city council would then decide what, how to rule on that particular item.
Yeah, thank you for that summary. So again, that's just, this was a zoning that they had by right until this, this code changed. Now, they'd have to go through that, that lengthy process to change it. But yeah, thank you for that. All right, any additional comments or questions before we entertain a motion? Oh, good, Mr. Knutson?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, a couple of quick things if I can, just for clarification amongst council, the public, and otherwise. If council does elect and choose to remove the number five and move forward with the other changes, so what you're talking about then is, is that you're going to have a little bit of difference in terms of what that zoning looks like for the particular neighborhood. So if that's, if that's what you want to do, then we can do that. But you're going to have a variation of heights and densities throughout the same neighborhood that's going to look different. And, but if that's the case that we want to do and kind of do like a mixed, and everybody kind of does something a little bit different based on the process they go through with the city, I just want to explain that that's, that's what that looks like in terms of, you know, zoning. Typically, you put zoning in place because you want all, all that, that neighborhood or that area to look similar with, with use and heights and so forth. So just want to put that out there. And then in terms of the, the conversation, if I have a R1, a single-family home, I don't live maybe next to an RM right now, but the, the scenario where any property that's adjacent to me can be rezoned for any, any, any other classification that's out there, that's kind of a, kind of a bit of a reach in terms of what that looks like, because we need similar type of properties in similar areas, and that's the whole concept of what zoning is. And we have other zoning classifications already on the books that far exceed the 30 feet. So if that, if that same type of reasoning was out there, I can, let's rezone my property to residential estates or to a commercial property or, you know, so that, that kind of, that, that thought is, is very obscure in terms of the reality and how zoning does get practiced within, within the city. It is something to consider, and it's a good conversation to have, but I just kind of want to explain how zoning changes can, can, can change. A lot of times, you'll see like an R1 to R3, or, you know, those, those types of things, or mixed use can take place. But very rarely you see such a stark change from like an R1 to an RM in a neighborhood. So just keep that in mind, and hopefully that was helpful.
Thank you.
Mayor, one more question.
Yeah.
Because I'm, I'm trying to, on, it says, a residential South District Dimensional Standards Summary Strike Through says originally minimum width of side yard used to be 10 feet. That means the people next to you are going to be 20 feet away from you. We've scraped, so we strike that. We've now three feet next to us, so that means we're only six feet away from this building that could be potentially 42 feet high, if I'm reading this properly. I know a lot of developments are cramming them all in there. That's six feet from building to building, if I'm reading this correctly. So basically, this is a 42-foot-high building in a residential district with a minimum side yard of only three feet. That means you're six feet from the person next to you. Why did we change that?
That's to be in compliance or conformance with the other high-density residential zoning districts. They're all three feet, feet on the side setbacks. This was a zero and 10 feet. It was a, in my mind, obviously, a typo. It should have been three feet because they're all intended to be very similar. They were all intended to have the same setbacks, which was three feet. You're right, we're looking for high density in that, in those areas. And this is not, again, this is not RM. This is a different zoning district. This is the R-Southgate District, which allows up to 42 feet, allows high density, the highest density residential zonings, and it's in keeping with the other higher-density zonings that we're looking for with that three feet.
So you're saying that was an error, or has it always been three feet?
It was created in 2016 along with the R, the other high-density residential, and they were all intended to have the same building setbacks. So it was an oversight, and it's definitely a typo in my mind. It was not going to be, no, it's not intended to be 10 feet, it's intended to be three feet. In this table, there's, there are actually two different references to this district with setbacks. In the complete table, it shows it correctly as three feet. This is a different little table that's meant to be helpful when you're looking at that zoning district description. And in this case, it's not correct. It's showing 10 feet. It's three feet in the big table. It's showing three feet here. This is just a typo, and it should be three feet like the other zoning districts.
Okay, so it is six feet from building to building.
That's allowed, that is allowed. Many times, they will build farther than that because of other constraints, but they could be allowed to build as close as three feet to the property line.
Okay.
All right, unless there's any other questions or comments, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan?
I'd like to make a comment and then make a motion. I, I like this one-size-fits-all grouping of housecleaning items, which is kind of what, what I thought it was. I'm a little concerned with number five. Seems like we dropped the ball seven years ago. I did zoom in and look at the different areas and the houses behind them and the pools, and I would, the mistake we made seven years ago, I would hate for us to clean it up like this, this way. I'd much rather see them come back to council. So I'd like to see this as like a consent agenda where we can just pull this item off, and if it wants to come back again, we can look at it. But, so I'd like to make a motion. Do I just say the motion and then say minus item number five? All righty.
Yeah.
I move to adopt ordinance number 22-1285, declaring the 2022 amendments to the Lake Havasu City Code, Title 14, Zoning Development Code, April 12, 2022, a public record and adopting the amendments excluding Amendment Five to the Development Code contained therein by reference.
Second. So you did you, you did the suggested motion, and that was seconded?
With the excluding...
Excluding item five?
Section five.
Okay.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Dolan, and we have a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion?
Just to clarify, RM is number five. We are... Sorry. RM is number five. That's the one. I just want to make sure we're, we're 100% on that. Okay, perfect. Because I don't have it in front of me, so.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Dolan, a second from Councilmember Lane. No additional discussion. I believe we're ready to vote. Councilmember Lynn?
It's an I for me with that amended part.
Thank you.
Motion carries four to three.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item four, which is award bid for the rehabilitate and reconstruct of taxiway project to Combs Construction Company, Inc. Mr. Sloan?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This project here is to, consists of excavating material along the edges of the runway and taxiway and placing four-inch aggregate rock to prevent the infill from eroding during storm events and providing dust and debris control during windy days and aircraft landings. This slide shows the layout of the taxiway, the runway, and the infill areas. The green indicates infill areas that have already been completed, and the yellow is the new areas to be completed in this project. This shows some of the existing conditions of the infill, which is part of the construction for this project, which does show a lot of loose, unconsolidated material, which is what we're trying to avoid. And when this project is constructed, this is what the new aggregate looks like. It's a four-inch aggregate. This should be, basically, the entire part of the infill that gets done would look similar to this. We did a competitive bidding process. We had four bidders on this project. The apparent low bidder was Combs Construction with a bid amount of $456,651.80. Engineer's estimate was $559,000. The base bid included 27,700 square yards of material, and the alternate included an additional 10,000 square yards of material. 90% of the project is from an ADOT grant with a 10% match from the city. And looking at the schedule, it's a one-month construction timeline of night work starting in May and completing the project in June. And that concludes my staff report.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Sloan? So all of this work will happen at nighttime?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And then as part of the process, will we engage with our tenants out at the airport to, to talk about what that looks like and timing so they have clear expectations?
Yes. The runway will be closed at night while this work is being performed since it's adjacent to the runway.
Okay. And we've had those discussions with them?
Mm-hmm.
And I understand? Perfect. Any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Councilmember Moses?
Is this the same company that is redoing the taxiways currently?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And they're going to do it in conjunction with the work they're already doing?
Correct. Most likely, the taxiway project will be complete when this starts in May, but there may be a little bit of an overlap.
Okay. All right, great. Yeah, because my concern was when we're tearing up our taxiways, I would think that this would be included. You know, we have to put it back so that there isn't stuff like this. But, and if you have two different companies coming out here with two different overheads and two different, that, that's going to just be that much more expensive and not efficient, so. But if it ended up being the same company, and it's basically just almost an amendment to the original, I appreciate the, the work. So thank you.
Any additional comments or questions before we open the public hearing?
And just to clarify, we call this taxiway, but it's not really a taxiway operation. It's the section in between there. It's the taxiway is, the FAA is clarifying as a taxiway for funding and all that.
Yeah, correct. It's the, the taxiway that we ripped up.
Yeah.
And readjusted everything. It's the, it's the area just, just, just right next to it that creates the dust.
Perfect.
Yeah, thanks, Jim.
Yeah. I don't know if that was any more helpful, but, but since I'm, I know some information, but, yeah, gotcha. But those are home, I'm not sure. But, yeah, the, the language of the introduction's a little strange, but it is still that aggregate that Mr. Sloan mentioned. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter?
I'm still Bonnie Toy. My question is, I noticed that when you did McCollough, you had extra funding that requested that came in afterwards, and I was just wondering if you were prepared for that this time, just in case?
Yeah, thank you for the question. So, yeah, two, two different projects. This one is funded through some grant funds through ADOT, so a little bit different in the project. This is fully funded for what the expectation is. But Mr. Sloan, if you have any additional comments?
No, you're correct. It's, it's fully funded through the grant and the match. It was programmed in this year's CIP budget, and so the money's been there. And we were just waiting for the taxiway project to get done to, to do this one.
Great, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Moses?
Motion.
Please.
I move to award the rehabilitate and reconstruction taxiway project to Combs Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of $456,651.80.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Moses, a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Lynn?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. And our last public hearing is item 8.5, approve amendment number one to the Engineering Professional Services Agreement for the Police Fuel Facility Replacement Project to Jacobs Engineering Group, Inc. Mr. Sloan?
Thank you. This amendment to the design contractor to replace the underground fuel tanks with the above-ground fuel tanks at the police facility is for regulatory reporting activities associated with the removal of the underground storage tanks. These include soil sampling, testing for petroleum contamination, filling out and submitting underground storage tank closure forms to the ADEQ, creating site plan documenting existing conditions and soil sampling locations, scheduling and attending inspections during tank removal with the ADEQ and our insurance carrier, and documentation of underground storage tank destruction. These additional services during construction will be performed by Jacobs Engineering for $18,199. This work will be performed in conjunction with the above-ground fuel tank construction project, which is scheduled for fall of 2022. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions from any members of the council for Mr. Sloan? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter?
I'm sorry, I'd really do like to know. I have things that I don't know. One is, why does the fuel tank thing have to go from below ground to above ground? And then, again, with the whole, are you prepared in case there has to be extra funding that wasn't expected thing? You know, I guess the McCollough thing got to me, okay?
Yeah, this is a, in a contract...
It may be a different issue, but the issue is being prepared for future...
Absolutely, no, great point. And we were prepared on McCollough, and we had the funds available to do that when we corrected it. But this is a professional services agreement, so this will be the exact amount. And Mr. Sloan, maybe you want to address why we're going from underground to above ground?
Absolutely. The fuel tanks are 30 years old, so they are at the end of their life. The regulatory requirements for testing inspections are very significant, and we will have a better product that is cheaper to maintain in the long run with going with an above-ground tank. So the tank has to be replaced anyway, and it just makes sense to go above ground.
Great, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for possible additional discussion or a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Dolan?
I have gas. I mean, I'm a gas expert, so, yeah, dealing with anything, it's always a fun one. Yeah, deal...
That's on record.
I know, I know. Yes, the above-ground tanks, we have above-ground tanks, and they are so wonderful because there's so much regulation you do not have to deal with. And the only thing worse than a, a tank in the ground is an old tank in the ground, and at that point, it's a nightmare.